Thank you. Secretary, please call the floor.
All call-up members, honorable Senator Aquino, Senator Caetano Allen, Senator Caetano Pia, Senator De La Rosa, Senator Erasito, Senator Estrada, Senator Gachalian, Senator Go, Senator Antiveros, Senator Laxson, Senator Lapid, Senator Legarda, Senator Marcoletta, Senator Marcos, Senator Padilla, Senator Pangilinan, Senator Soto, Senator Tulfo Irwin, Senator Tulfo Rafi, Senator Villanueva, Senator Villar Camil, Senator Villar Mart, Senator Zubiri, the Senate President.
With twenty-one senators present, Chair declares the presence of a quorum. Majority floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we proceed, Mr. President, may I respectfully acknowledge our guests from the gallery. We have with us the guests of Senator Juan Miguel Zubiri, the Secretary of Foreign Affairs and Trade and Chief Executive of the Ministry of Foreign Affairs and Trade of New Zealand, the honorable Bid Corry. He is with New Zealand Ambassador to the Philippines, Her Excellency Dr. Katrin Makintosh, Deputy Head of Mission, Ms. Stacy Quant, Senior Policy Officer, Mr. Connor Timman, Second Secretary, Mr. David Penne Cook, and Policy Advisor, Mr. Jao Yabut. We also have with us, Mr. President, guests of Senator Jingoy Estrada, Mayors of Zamboanga del Norte, Mayor Marissa Manigzaka, Municipality of Rizal, Mayor Lorimer Adasa, Municipality of Mutya, Mayor Jed Kimbo, Municipality of Labason, Congresswoman Lani Mercado Rivilia is also with us from the Second District of Cavite, Vice Governor Ram Rivilia Bautista of Cavite. Guests of this representation, Mr. President, LGU officials of Santa Maria Laguna led by Mayor Cindy Carolino and Congressman Zaldi Villia of the Lone District of Ciquihor. Guests of Senator Marcos, Mayor Lindon Bruce and Vice Mayor Brandon Bruce of Laurel Batangas. Guests of Senator Alan Peter Caetano, Congressman Jerry Perez, Second District of Zamboanga City, Mayor Limwell Toto Reyes of the Island Garden of Samal, Mayor Wilfredo Oliva of Iriga City. Guests of Senator De La Rosa, Mayor Zoraida Valentin of Malalag Davao del Sur, Mayor Jesus Doreza of Hagunoy Davao del Sur and Mayor Carl Mondejar of New Lucena Iluilo. We welcome all of them in this august chamber, Mr. President.
To the aforementioned guests, welcome to your Senate. Majority floor leader.
Mr. President, at this juncture, I move that we proceed with the reference of business.
Any objection? Hearing none. Secretaries directed to comply.
Bills on first reading, Senate Number 601, An Act Regulating Children’s Use of Social Media Towards Promoting Their Safety, Well-Being, and Responsible Digital Uses, Senator Padilla.
To the Committees in Science and Technology and Women, Children, Family Relations, and Gender Equality.
602, imposing death penalty on the heinous crime of security personnel engaged to commit murder and providing penalties for any person who recruit, maintain, use, aid, fund, or train security personnel to commit murder and for other purposes, Senator Padilla.
To the Committee on Justice and Human Rights.
603, An Act prohibiting unfair debt collection practices providing penalties therefore and for other purposes, Senator Padilla.
To the Committee on Banks, Financial Institutions, and Currencies.
604, Amending Article 1, Section 5 of RA 9997, the National Commission on Muslim Filipinos Act of 2009, Senator Padilla.
To the Committees in Cultural Communities and Muslim Affairs, Civil Service, Governmental Organization, and Professional Regulation.
605, An Act mandating the inclusion of Filipino history as a separate subject in the high school curriculum, Senator Padilla.
To the Committee on Basic Education.
606, Amending RA 1495, an act to include in the curricula of all public and private schools, colleges, and universities courses on the life, works, and writings of Jose Rizal, particularly his novel "Noleme Tanghere" and "Filipino Tourism," authorizing the printing and distribution thereof and for other purposes, Senator Padilla.
To the Committees in Basic Education, Higher Technical Vocational Education and Finance.
607, strengthening the independence of the Commission on Elections, amending pertinent provisions of BP 881, the Omnibus Election Code as amended, providing funds therefore and for other purposes, Senator Padilla.
To the Committees in Electoral Reforms and People’s Participation, Civil Service, Governmental Organization, and Professional Regulation and Finance.
608, mandating the adoption of manual voting and counting at the pressing level and automated transmission and canvassing during national, local, and Bangsa-Moore Autonomous Region of Muslim Indian Election, amending RA 8436 as amended and for other purposes, Senator Padilla.
To the Committees in Electoral Reforms and People’s Participation and Finance.
609, An Act Providing for the Equal Use of Filipino and English Languages in all government issuances and documents, Senator Padilla.
To the Committees in Civil Service, Governmental Organization, and Professional Regulation, Public Innovation, and Mass Media, and Finance.
610, defining untruthful statement and fabricated evidence before Congress in the conduct of their legislative and oversight functions committed by government personnel, providing penalties therefore, Senator Padilla.
To the Committee on Justice and Human Rights.
611, protecting free exercise and enjoyment of religion of students in educational institutions and providing penalties for violations thereof, Senator Padilla.
To the Committees in Basic Education and Higher Technical and Vocational Education.
612, providing assistance to victims of terror attacks, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes, Senator Padilla.
To the Committees in Social Justice, Welfare, and Rural Development and Finance.
613, prohibiting discrimination on the basis of protected attributes, providing penalties and for other purposes, Senator Padilla.
To the Committees in Social Justice, Welfare, and Rural Development, Cultural Communities, and Muslim Affairs, and Finance.
614, establishing penitentiary systems in regions 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 8, 9, 10, 12, and 13 to decongest the new believed prison and other penal farms and provinces appropriating funds and for other purposes, Senator Padilla.
To the Committees on Justice and Human Rights, Public Works, and Finance.
615, mandating all public and private hospitals to observe, respect, and accommodate the religious beliefs, practices, and customs of Muslim patients in the delivery of healthcare services and for other purposes, Senator Padilla.
To the Committees on Health and Demography and Cultural Communities and Muslim Affairs.
616, protecting the rights of refugees and stateless persons, establishing the Refugees and Stateless Persons Protection Board and for other purposes, Senator Padilla.
To the Committees on Justice and Human Rights, Foreign Relations, and Finance.
617, mandating the institutionalization, development, training, organization, and administration of ROTC program in higher educational institutions and technical vocational institutions appropriating funds and for other purposes, Senator Padilla.
To the Committees in Higher Technical and Vocational Education, National Defense and Security, Peace Unification and Reconciliation, and Finance.
618, providing for the integration of Bangsa-Moore history, culture, and identity in the study of Philippine history in basic education, Senator Padilla.
To the Committees in Basic Education and Cultural Communities and Muslim Affairs.
619, amending Sessions 27 and 28 of RA 9165, the Comprehensive Indigenous Drugs Act of 2002 as amended, imposing the death penalty when offense is committed by an officer, a member of the AP, the PNP, or any other uniform or law enforcement agency or an elective official and for other purposes, Senator Padilla.
To the Committees on Public Order, Endangers, Drugs, and Justice and Human Rights.
620, establishing a business permit and licensing office in every city or municipality in the country and making the position of a business permit and licensing office, officer mandatory in every city or municipality, amending Sections 171, 175, 176, 177, 178, 179, 180, 181, 183, 194, 195, 196, 280, 316, 443, and 454, adding Section 498 to RA 7160, the Local Government Code of 1991, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committees in Local Government, Trade, Commerce, and Entrepreneurship, Ways and Means, and Finance.
621, providing for the Bill of Rights and Obligations of Taxpayers, creating the Office of the National Taxpayer Advocate appropriating funds and for other purposes, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committees on Ways and Means and Finance.
622, providing for the revised Cooperative Code of the Philippines, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committees on Cooperatives, Constitutional Amendments, and Revision of Codes, Ways and Means, and Finance.
623, prescribing mandatory guidelines on the establishment and operation of local universities and colleges, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committees on Higher Technical and Vocational Education and Local Government.
624, discontinuing the use of spiral progression approach in basic education curriculum, deleting for the purpose Section 5, Paragraph GFRA 10533, the Enhanced Basic Education Act of 2013, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committee on Basic Education.
625, creating the National Education Council defining its powers and functions and appropriating funds therefore, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committees in Basic Education, Higher Technical Vocational Education and Finance.
626, amending Section 5, Paragraph 3 of RA 9225, the Citizenship Retention and Reacquisition Act of 2003, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committee on Justice and Human Rights.
627, prohibiting the use of mobile devices and other electronic gadgets during class hours from kindergarten to senior high school in all private, public, and private education institutions, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committee on Basic Education.
628, enacting the Literary Coordinating Council to the National Literacy Council, strengthening its powers and functions, streamlining its membership structure, providing its local support mechanisms, repealing RA 7165 as amended and appropriating funds therefore, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committees in Basic Education, Local Government, and Finance.
629, mandating the automation of national public school database, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committee on Basic Education.
630, increasing the minimum salary grade level of special needs education teachers from salary grade 14 to 22 and appropriating funds therefore, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committees in Civil Service, Governmental Organization, and Professional Regulation, Basic Education, and Finance.
631, digitizing all books necessary for public education, establishing the Philippine Online Library appropriating funds therefore, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committees in Basic Education, Science and Technology, and Finance.
632, requiring all public telecommunications entities and internet service providers to increase service coverage and deliver a minimum standard for internet connection speeds, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committee in Public Services.
633, promoting the adoption of digital payments for financial transactions of the government and all merchants and for other purposes, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committees on Banks, Financial Institutions, and Currencies, and Finance.
634, granting enhanced protection to consumers, amending RA 7394, the Consumer Act of the Philippines, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committee on Trade, Commerce, and Entrepreneurship.
635, establishing a nursing home for homeless and abandoned senior citizens in every city or municipality in the Philippines appropriating funds and for other purposes, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committees on Social Justice, Welfare, and Rural Development, Local Government, Ways and Means, and Finance.
636, providing a new separation, retirement, and pension system for the military and the uniformed personnel appropriating funds therefore, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committees on National Defense and Security, Peace Unification and Reconciliation, Government Corporations, and Public Enterprises, Ways and Means, and Finance.
637, providing for the Magna Carta for Berengai health workers, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committees on Health and Demography, Local Government, and Finance.
638, providing in urgent job seekers discounted or waived fees and charges in the issuance of certain pre-employment documents issued by government agencies, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committees on Labor, Employment, and Human Resources Development, and Social Justice, Welfare, and Rural Development.
639, providing for a national energy policy and framework for the establishment of an energy subsidy program, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committees on Energy, Public Services, and Finance.
640, providing for a national policy and framework for energy advocacy, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committee on Energy, Civil Service, Governmental Organization, and Professional Regulation, and Finance.
641, institutionalizing transparency in the Philippine downstream oil industry and amending RA 8479, the Downstream Oil Industry Regulation Act, Senator Gachalian.
To the Committees on Energy and Ways and Means.
642, mandating the Philippine Postal Corporation to adapt a modernized Zone Improvement Plan Code System, Senator Villar M.
To the Committees on Government Corporations and Public Enterprises and Local Government.
643, providing for an increase in an automatic adjustment mechanism in the personal economic relief allowance granted to government employees, Senator Villar M.
To the Committees in Civil Service, Governmental Organization, and Professional Regulation, and Finance.
644, providing for the Magna Carta for public disaster risk reduction and management workers, Senator Villar M.
To the Committees in National Defense and Security, Peace Unification and Reconciliation, Civil Service, Governmental Organization, and Professional Regulation, and Finance.
645, providing Katrin Maiti to government contractual and job order personnel, Senator Villar M.
To the Committees in Civil Service, Governmental Organization, and Professional Regulation, and Finance.
646, providing educational benefits to the children of members of the uniformed personnel of the PNP, AHP, BFP, BJMP, Philippine Coast Guard, NBI, PIDEA, and Bureau of Corrections and appropriating funds therefore, Senator Villar M.
To the Committees in Civil Service, Governmental Organization, and Professional Regulation, Basic Education, Ways and Means, and Finance.
647, granting incentives and other benefits to local health unit workers, Senator Villar M.
To the Committees in Local Government and Health and Demography.
648, establishing the Ways Workers’ Health and Welfare Program, Senator Villar M.
To the Committees on Labor, Employment, and Human Resources Development, and Finance.
649, enhancing workers’ protection and skills development in course of digital economy job description, Senator Villar M.
To the Committees on Labor and Employment, Human Resource Development, Science and Technology, and Finance.
650, enacting policies to prevent and address acts of bullying and other similar acts in the workplace, Senator Villar M.
To the Committees on Labor, Employment, and Human Resource Development, Civil Service, Governmental Organization, and Finance.
Additional reference to business, bills on first reading, Senate Number 651, An Act Institutionalizing a National Telemedicine System in the Philippines, Senator Villar M.
To the Committees on Health and Demography, and Finance.
652, providing for a Magna Carta for students and for other purposes, Senator Marcos.
To the Committees on Basic Education, Higher Technical Vocational Education, Ways and Means, and Finance.
653, providing for the Magna Carta for tricycle drivers and operators appropriating funds and for other purposes, Senator Marcos.
To the Committees on Public Services, Local Government, and Finance.
654, establishing the Disability Support Fund for the empowerment, full participation, inclusion of persons with disabilities in society appropriating funds and for other purposes, Senator Marcos.
To the Committees on Social Justice, Welfare, and Rural Development, and Finance.
655, integrating the subject on climate change education in the science curriculum of grades 2 to senior high school of the Philippine education system, both private and public, Senator Marcos.
To the Committees on Basic Education and Environment, Natural Resources, and Climate Change.
656, urging the comprehensive planning, development, and export promotion of the Philippine Mango and providing funds therefore, Senator Marcos.
To the Committees in Agriculture, Food and Agribusiness Reform, Trade, Commerce, and Entrepreneurship, and Finance.
657, urging the comprehensive planning, development, and export promotion of pineapples and providing funds therefore, Senator Marcos.
To the Committees in Agriculture, Food and Agribusiness Reform, Trade, Commerce, and Entrepreneurship, and Finance.
658, urging the comprehensive planning, development, and export promotion of banana providing funds therefore, Senator Marcos.
To the Committees in Agriculture, Food and Agribusiness Reform, Trade, Commerce, and Entrepreneurship, and Finance.
659, urging the comprehensive planning, development, and export promotion of the dragon fruit providing funds therefore, Senator Marcos.
To the Committees in Agriculture, Food and Agribusiness Reform, Trade, Commerce, and Entrepreneurship, and Finance.
660, urging the comprehensive planning, development, and export promotion of meringue locally known as malungay providing funds therefore, Senator Marcos.
To the Committees in Agriculture, Food and Agribusiness Reform, Trade, Commerce, and Entrepreneurship, and Finance.
661, enacting recognition of civil effects of church decree annulment, Senator Zubiri.
To the Committee on Women, Children, Family Relations, and Gender Equality.
662, requiring critical information infrastructure institutions to adopt and implement adequate measures to protect their information and communications technology systems and infrastructure, Senator Zubiri.
To the Committees in Science and Technology, and Finance.
663, defining and penalizing espionage and other offenses against national security, Senator Zubiri.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security, Peace Unification and Reconciliation.
664, penalizing foreign interference in the Philippines and creating the Counter-Foreign Interference Council and for other purposes, Senator Zubiri.
To the Committees on National Defense and Security, Peace Unification and Reconciliation, and Justice and Human Rights.
665, providing for the establishment and support of a drug abuse treatment and rehabilitation center in every region throughout the Philippines appropriating funds therefore, Senator Go.
To the Committees on Public Order and Endangered Drugs, Health and Demography, and Finance.
666, regulating the planning, design, construction, occupancy, and maintenance of buildings, promoting building resilience versus fire, flood, storm, earthquake, and multiple hazards. Enacting a new Philippine Building Act thereby repealing PD 1096 for and for other purposes, Senator Go.
To the Committees on Public Works and Finance.
667, providing enhanced protection, security, and benefits for media and entertainment workers, Senator Go.
To the Committees on Labor and Employment and Human Resource Development, Public Information and Mass Media.
668, enacting fully recognizing the services of social workers by ensuring competitive remuneration and compensation packages appropriating funds therefore, Senator Go.
To the Committees in Civil Service, Governmental Organization, and Professional Regulation, Social Justice, Welfare, and Rural Development, and Finance.
669, amending RA 10121, the Philippine Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Act of 2010 for the purpose of granting hazard pre to disaster response personnel during state of calamity, Senator Go.
To the Committees on National Defense and Security, Peace Unification and Reconciliation, Ways and Means, and Finance.
670, providing protection and incentives for freelance workers, Senator Go.
To the Committees on Labor, Employment, and Human Resources Development, and Ways and Means.
671, institutionalizing the Pambansang Pabahay para sa Pilipino program, Senator Go.
To the Committees on Urban Planning, Housing and Resettlement, Local Government, and Finance.
672, requiring the inclusion of financial literacy and entrepreneurship as a separate core subject in the junior and senior high school curriculum of the K-12 program, amending RA 10679, the Youth Entrepreneurship Act, Senator Go.
To the Committees on Basic Education and Youth.
673, establishing a mandatory crop insurance coverage for small farmers, providing for national government subsidy and for other purposes, Senator Go.
To the Committees in Agriculture, Food and Agribusiness Reform, Government Corporations, and Public Enterprises, and Finance.
674, providing for a Magna Carta of government accountants, Senator Go.
To the Committees in Civil Service, Governmental Organization, and Professional Regulation, and Finance.
675, strengthening the practice of midwifery as a profession in the Philippines providing funds therefore, repealing RA 7392, the Philippines Midwifery Act of 1992, Senator Go.
To the Committees in Civil Service, Governmental Organization, and Professional Regulation, and Finance.
676, institutionalizing the assistance to individuals in crisis situation program of the DSWD, providing penalties for violation of unlawful acts and appropriating funds therefore, Senator Go.
To the Committees on Social Justice, Welfare, and Rural Development, and Finance.
677, providing for a system of earlier voting for qualified senior citizens, pregnant women, and persons with disabilities of the Philippines appropriating funds and for other purposes, Senator Go.
To the Committees in Electoral Reforms and People’s Participation, Social Justice, Welfare, and Rural Development, and Finance.
678, institutionalizing the National Tertiary Games and appropriating funds therefore, Senator Go.
To the Committees in Higher Technical and Vocational Education, Sports, and Finance.
679, promoting entrepreneurship by establishing a sustainable financing program for micro and small enterprises through the Pondo sa Pagbabago at Pagasansap Program appropriating funds therefore, Senator Go.
To the Committees on Trade, Commerce, and Entrepreneurship, Economic Affairs, and Finance.
680, providing post-harvest facilities for farmers appropriating funds therefore, Senator Go.
To the Committees in Agriculture, Food and Agribusiness Reform, Public Works, and Finance.
681, institutionalizing the fertilizer and pesticide subsidy program under the Department of Agriculture appropriating funds therefore, Senator Go.
To the Committees in Agriculture, Food and Agribusiness Reform, and Finance.
682, modernizing the Philippine Coast Guard creating for the purpose the Philippine Coast Guard Modernization Trust Fund and appropriating funds therefore, Senator Go.
To the Committees in Public Services, National Defense and Security, Peace Unification and Reconciliation, and Finance.
683, providing for a simplified process for the admission of drug dependence in government drug rehabilitation facilities amending Sections 54 and 77 of RA 9165, the Comprehensive Indigenous Drugs Act of 2002, Senator Go.
To the Committees in Public Order and Endangered Drugs, and Health and Demography.
684, granting educational benefits or incentives to the children of fallen military and uniformed personnel and for other purposes, Senator Go.
To the Committees in Basic Education, Higher Technical and Vocational Education, and Finance.
685, providing for a national housing development production and financing program regulating its appropriation and for its implementation, Senator Go.
To the Committees in Urban Planning, Housing and Resettlement, Sustainable Development Goals, Innovation and Future Thinking, Ways and Means, and Finance.
686, prohibiting the operation and conduct of online gambling activities in the Philippines, Senator Go.
To the Committees on Games and Amusements and Banks, Financial Institutions, and Currencies.
687, instituting a national autism care plan establishing a subcommittee on autism under the National Council on Disability Affairs and providing funds therefore, Senator Antiveros.
To the Committees on Health and Demography, Women, Children, Family Relations, and Gender Equality, and Finance.
688, strengthening the national program for the elimination of tuberculosis amending for the purposes of RA 10767 or the Comprehensive Tuberculosis Elimination Plan Act, Senator Antiveros.
To the Committees on Health and Demography, Higher Technical and Vocational Education, Ways and Means, and Finance.
689, authorizing the Department of Health to set and approve the bed capacity and service capability of all DUI hospitals, Senator Antiveros.
To the Committees on Health and Demography, and Finance.
690, allowing foreign nationals to take local licensure examinations for certification purposes amending RA 8981, the PRC Modernization Act of 2000, Senator Lapid.
To the Committee on Civil Service, Governmental Organization, and Professional Regulation.
691, amending Section 2 of Act Number 3326, an act to establish periods of prescription for violations penalized by special acts and municipal ordinances and to provide when prescriptions shall begin to run, Senator Lapid.
To the Committee on Justice and Human Rights.
692, amending RA 8047, the Book Publishing Industry Development Act providing for the scanning and conversion of public school textbooks into ebooks and other digital formats, Senator Lapid.
To the Committees in Basic Education and Science and Technology.
693, enacting the welfare and protection of business processes outsourcing workers in the Philippines, Senator Lapid.
To the Committee on Labor, Employment, and Human Resources Development.
694, providing for the mandatory appointment of building official in provinces, cities, and municipalities amending RA 7160, the Local Government Code of 1991 as amended, Senator Lapid.
To the Committees in Local Government and Civil Service, Governmental Organization, and Professional Regulation.
695, providing for compressed working arts arrangement in the private sector and for other purposes thereby amending Articles 83, 85, and 87 of PD 442 as amended otherwise known as the Law典 Code of the Philippines, Senator Lapid.
To the Committee on Labor, Employment, and Human Resources Development.
696, enacting establishing a national policy of free housing through Yusefirak providing funds therefore and for other purposes, Senator Lapid.
To the Committees on Urban Planning, Housing and Resettlement, Local Government, and Finance.
697, establishing a green public procurement program for all branches of government, Senator Lapid.
To the Committees on Sustainable Development Goals, Innovation and Future Thinking, and Finance.
698, establishing a nursing home for qualified homeless and abandoned senior citizens in every city or municipality in the Philippines appropriating funds and for other purposes, Senator Lapid.
To the Committees on Social Justice, Welfare, and Rural Development, Local Government, Ways and Means, and Finance.
699, enacting strengthened human rights education and the system of legal assistance for migrant workers amending Section 23 of RA 8042, the Migrant Workers and Overseas Filipinos Act of 1995 as amended, Senator Lapid.
To the Committee on Migrant Workers.
Senate Number 700, enacting preserving the indigenous games of the Philippines and appropriating funds therefore, Senator Lapid.
To the Committees on Culture and Arts, Sports, and Finance, Majority floor leader.
Mr. President, Senator Zubiri seeking the floor. I move that he be recognized.
What is the pleasure of the Honorable Zubiri?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, my apologies. I should have taken this up in a last week’s session, but I wrestle on the U.S. tariffs. I found the wrestle on the economic impacts on the U.S. tariffs of the Philippines. It was referred to the Committee on Ways and Means and as the primary committee in trade and industry secondary committee. This is Senate Resolution Number 62. Is it possible, Mr. President, with your permission of the body, that we just refer it to my committee? As I don’t have anything to do anyway, Mr. President. Very few bills are referred to me and so that I can take it up.
What does the majority floor leader say?
We have no objection, Mr. President.
So the chair takes... What is the main... The chair will now take the manifestation of the Honorable Zubiri’s motion concurred into by the majority floor leader. Therefore, the aforementioned Senate... Proposed Senate Resolution...
Number 62, Mr. President.
Number 62, the referral thereof shall be transferred from the Committee on...
Ways and Means and Trade and Industry.
Ways and Means...
And Trade and Industry as secondary.
And Trade and Industry as secondary committee to the Committee on Economic Affairs with the secondary committees still remaining, namely Ways and Means and Trade.
Yes, Mr. President. That is the accurate, Mr. President.
Any objection?
Thank you. I’ll just say thank you.
Before acting on the motion, Senator Aimé filed a similar resolution. Can we likewise refer it to the Committee on Economic Affairs? Session is suspended.
supply and demand, the more a baby sucks, the more there will be milk. So the more na may magregalo ng milk, eh di the more na hindi na makaka-produce ng gatas ang nanay, and then tuloy-tuloy na siyang wala ng supply, tuloy-tuloy na siyang magiging dependent sa formula milk. Ang tindi ng laban nito mga, mga colleagues, mga kababae na nakikinig sa atin. Ang tinding laban nito kasi talagang pinipilit nung mga milk companies na magbigay ng ganyang libreng mga gatas sa mga ospital. Sa pakakaalam ko, we have been quite successful kasi wala na ho ako nababalitaan, wala na ako naririnig. Pero consider this a call to DOH, to the LGU executives na tingnan niyo, let's be sure na hindi na ho tumabalik, hindi na ho tayo masingitan ng ganito. Another thing that's very important, understanding this issue on sponsorship. Siguro many of you will say, pero I see commercials na pinopromote 'yung milk formula, 'yung tinatawag na breast milk substitutes. Well supposedly, hindi 'yan dapat napopromote for under six months and below. There was a time, and I still believe in it, gusto ko nga 24 months pa onward ang pagpromote, kasi 'yung 24 months medyo toddler na 'yan. Eh ano ba difference nung baby na six months, seven months, eight months? I don't think most people can tell the difference by looking at a baby na advertisement. So when you see a baby na advertisement, hindi sila lumalabag dun sa law, pero kasi 'yung law natin medyo mababa 'yung age na pwede ng ipromote 'yan. So that's still something that I wish we had the political will to do para lalong ma-promote ang pagbe-breastfeed. Kasi alam niyo na 'yung style ng promotion sasabihin na pag ito 'yung gatas na inom ng baby mo, magiging matalino siya, magiging star pupil siya, magiging matangkad siya. Eh hindi po the best way na maging lahat siya na ganun, eh dumede siya sa nanay niya. The next law is RA 7600 or the Rooming In and Breastfeeding Act in 1992 authored by the late Senator Ed Angara. Ito po 'yung law na nagre-require na pagkapanganak dun agad 'yung baby sa room ng mommy as the picture shows. Kasi dati kasama 'yan sa nagpapakahirap sa nanay na maging successful ang kanyang pag-breastfeed, kasi 'yung baby niya nasa nursery. So ayaw din 'yan nung mga milk companies na mapasa din itong batas na 'to, kasi the more na 'yung baby malayo sa baby, eh the more na pag iniyak at 'yun 'yung sinasabi ng nurse, eh umiyake, tas bibigyan nila ng formula. Pero kung ang baby kasama na agad ng mommy pag iyak, dead na ng mommy kaagad ang ibibigay sa kanya. So this is a very important law in 1992. And then in 2006, I filed my first bill to promote breastfeeding in the country. I authored Senate Bill Number 2490 or the Breastfeeding Promotion Act. We passed it, but unfortunately, it stalled in the House of Representatives. So nagstall din sa kanila paminsan-minsan, hindi lang namang po sa atin, kasi may gusto sanang iintrap sana ako ng Majority Floor Leader to say that, kasi sinabi ko na para sa inyong lahat. In 2007, no need to say sorry. In 2007, I refiled my bill in the 14th Congress, Senate Bill Number 761, which sought to require lactation station in public places and in private and government offices. It also mandated employers to allow milk breaks for nursing employees. So ngayon, so finally po masato in 2009. It's called the Expanded Breastfeeding Promotion Act of 2009. And this is why when you go to malls, when you go to bus stations, when you go to airports, you will see these breastfeeding stations. Ito po 'yun, ito po 'yung batas natin that has been in place for some 15 years. And I'm very grateful nakikita ko 'to sa mga, kahit saan ako nakakarating sa Pilipinas, pero kung may nakita kayong public place na tingin niyo kailangan 'yan, pakireport na lang sa DOH or sabihin niyo 'yung administrator dun, because this is the law and it needs to be followed. What's also interesting to note, dear colleagues, is that itong lactation stations natin are also available in the Senate and in the House of Representatives. The lactation station in the Senate is also my project with our Gender and Development Office. Circa what year? I think this was before my second term ended in 2016. I also want to point out that here, one of the reasons I take time delivering this speech is because many of us have female colleagues, many of them are mothers, many of them have given birth, and many of them would like to breastfeed. And one way we can support them is of course this breastfeeding room which is open to the public. The good news here is I've heard reports where a resource person would attend the hearing, nagbe-breastfeed siya, alam niyo naman 'yung hearing natin, minsan naabuti na apat na oras, anim na oras, and they were very relieved to know that, pakibalik lang 'yung picture, to know that may breastfeeding room tayo. But I also want to take the opportunity to commend my staff. I have many female staff, including my lawyers, including my personal staff, who are models for the working mom breastfeeding life. There are dozens of photos of them discreetly, with discreetly breastfeeding behind the scene, whatever work their principals are doing, they're still there discreetly breastfeeding. So I encourage our colleagues to take note of this, kasi these are working moms na even though napasan na natin 'yung 105 Expanded Maternity Leave Law authored, sponsored by Senator Isa here in the Senate, and which I authored when I was in the House, kailangan pa rin nila ng support while they are working with us. So on the last point, this is an ongoing challenge for us. We, my office and I personally have breastfeeding seminars all over the country, kasi ang laking tipid, I don't think I emphasized that yet, ang laking tipid for a family to be able to rely on a breastfeeding mom's milk. Ang laki ng, imagine if for one year nakakapag-breastfeed siya, ang laking bagay nun sa health ng anak niya, pero ang laking tipid din sa ibang gastusin dun sa pamilya. So I hope DOH continues the work, tayo naman po eh nag-aadvocate lang nito, but we are, we call on all our colleagues to support this. And one last point is in the Breastfeeding Promotion Act that we pass, it calls on Deped, Ched, and Testa to incorporate in the courses. Doesn't mean that you have to have a separate course dedicated to this, hindi ganun 'yun, ini-incorporate lang. So when you talk about family life, when you talk about health and nutrition, nakaincorporate 'yan sa courses nila. So I think that is the end of my breastfeeding lecture for everyone. I hope that you will all be supportive of your female staff and breastfeeding culture in the Philippines. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Senator Kayetano, Majority Floor Leader.
Yes, Mr. President, first to interpolate is one of our breastfeeding champions of the Senate, no other than Senator Bato de la Rosa. I move that we, I move that he be recognized, Mr. President.
Senator de la Rosa, our breastfeeding champion is so recognized. You may proceed, sir, with the permission of the lady.
Actually, Mr. President, this is not an interpolation, just a short manifestation. That for the record, since the senatorial comeback of the good lady from Pateros, Senator Pia, in the 19th Congress, she has been advocating for this breastfeeding. And for the record, I've been very supportive of her advocacy. Nakatatlong Congress na po tayo, and I want to be consistent, this time around, I want to support you, because I myself, I really love breastfeeding, Mr. President. You know why? Please don't get me wrong. You know why? Kasi siyam kaming magkapatid na lumaki through breastfeeding ng aking nanay. And kapag derating 'yung panahon na matuyo, tutuyo na 'yung gatas sa, paano tawag 'yan? Tutuy sa amin sa bisaya. 'Yung tutuy ng aking nanay, lalo na lalo na, medyo lumaki na ako, utusan ka nga ako ng nanay. Oi, magsaing ka na, kahit na hindi panahon pa na magsaing, i-advance mo na 'yung kakainin natin mamayang hapunan, magsaing ka na. You know why? What's the purpose of that? Totoo 'yung sabi ni Senator Pia na, kwan daw, hindi siya nutritious 'yung arms, 'yung from the rice. Arms, arms, arms from the rice.
Arm, walang es, arm.
Arm, arm. Basta sa amin, kwan 'yun eh, ano 'yun? Laut, laut sa bigas. Pero 'yun sa amin, hindi 'yung sabi mo na huhugasan 'yung bigas. Kundi talagang lulutuin 'yung bigas, habang kumukulo 'yung bigas, ibabaos namin tubig, kukunin tubig, at 'yun ilagay sa bibiron, at pinapadidi sa amin, hindi nga siya nutritious, but it served the purpose. Dahil tatahimik na kami, 'yung bata kapag nakadidi na ng arms na galing sa bigas, tahimik na kami dahil busog na eh. May laman na 'yung tsan namin. So I really, I really appreciate parents na talagang nagsumikap na mabre-spread, mabre-breastfeed 'yung kanilang mga anak. Dahil kung lalo na 'yung working, 'yung nanay ko nagtitinda sa palengke ng isda, talagang sigurohin niya 'yan na bago siya aalis, maka mabre-spread 'yung mga kapatid ko. At pag minsan, pag wala siya dun na sa palengke, hinahati ko 'yung kapatid ko doon sa palengke para i-breastfeed ng nanay ko. So that's why, that's the reason why I love breastfeeding. Iba 'yung iniisip ninyo, kaya wag kayo tumawa dyan. And that's for the record, Mr. President, thank you, and I am very supportive of Senator Pia's advocacy. Thank you, Mr. President.
And I just want to thank the gentleman for sharing that. It seems to be a core memory for him. Ako naman 'yung nanay ko dinadala sa office ko 'yung anak ko para magpatuloy ng breastfeeding, kasi after ng maternity leave na 60 days, ang hirap na hirap ako sa first few days kung paano ko iaano 'yung gatas ko. So 'yung mommy ko dinadala niya, so same as you would do with your siblings. And I just wanna, I just also want to thank Senator Bato for sharing this story, because, and I've also shared this before. When I first started delivering these breastfeeding speeches, hindi, nag-uumpisa pala 'yung speech ko, tumatawa na 'yung mga kalalakihan dito. So I thank the gentleman, hindi namang kayo tumawa nung nagspeech ako, kasi hindi naman nakakatawa ang breastfeeding. Natawa na lang kayo kay Senator Bato, because sadyang nakakatawa naman siya. Pero niliwanag niya ang ibig niya sabihin, so thank you for that, thank you for that. Kasi importante maintindihan talaga natin 'yung kahalagahan ng subject matter na ito.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you Senator Bato, Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. President, hindi po ako kasama dun sa iniisip ni Senator Bato na may iniisip na iba. And that's why I am a big fan of Senator Bato, and I know that he is indeed a champion for breastfeeding in this August chamber. Next, Mr. President, to interpolate is the distinguished gentleman from Palawan, no other than Senator Erwin Tulfo. I move that he be recognized.
Senator Erwin Tulfo is recognized for his interjections. You may proceed, sir, with the permission of the lady who has the floor.
Mr. President, it's not an interpolation, rather a manifestation of my full support for Senator Pia Kayetano's privileged speech on the importance of breastfeeding. This month of August, as we commemorate both World Breastfeeding Month and our very own national breastfeeding awareness, it is timely that we renew our commitment to the welfare of Filipino moms and their children. With this kind, with the kind indulgence of the Honorable Lady from Taguig, may I pose a few questions? Not to challenge, but rather to underscore the significance of the issues she raised.
Of course.
Mr. President, question is, how much funding, public funding is actually allocated to ensure these programs reach the women who need them most? Because if it's not enough, Mr. President, then we can probably, this budget season, we can ask the Department of Health to increase so that we can further help these mothers on their breastfeeding campaign.
Thank you for that question, Mr. President. For 2025, there is a budget of 25.9 million, so almost 26 million, for optimal infant and young child feeding practices, which includes breastfeeding promotions. These are all under the Disease Prevention and Control Bureau budget. So my understanding is, this is not entirely for breastfeeding, so part lang 'yan. Your question is so important, Mr. President, Mr. President, because when I mentioned the history and how milk companies have a lot of ads, may budget sila for ads, and they are promoting milk in a can. Wala naman tayong budget for promoting milk from mother's breast, wala. The most lang na requirement is sabihin lang nila na mother's milk is best, there's a standard statement na ganun. So definitely, Mr. President, 'yung idea po ng ating colleague to increase the budget would be very welcome. Thank you.
All right. The next question, Mr. President, are there enough breastfeeding stations? Not just in commercial establishments like malls, but more importantly, government offices and other public places, particularly in the provinces, Mr. President?
I doubt very much if there is any body, entity that has really checked how prevalent the public breastfeeding facilities are all over. I can only speak for my own experience, kasi nga hinahanap ko 'yan when I travel. So I can say that in a far-flung terminal, bus terminals, bus terminals mas bihira, medyo dun minsan, kasi maliit lang, tapos wala silang space. But I've seen it in, terminal pa ba tawag dun, 'yung port, there you go, port. The port, kasi alam ng Chief of Staff ko 'yung port kung saan totoo ako dun sa breastfeeding lactation room, was the port from, is it Toobigon, Toobigon, Bohol to Cebu. So meron naman, but I'm so certain, Mr. President, that we can do better.
Because, Mr. President, the lack of these facilities may discourage moms or mothers from breastfeeding in public due to privacy concerns and societal perceptions.
That is absolutely correct, Mr. President.
One last point, Mr. President, what are the common obstacles that prevent mothers from practicing breastfeeding?
Well, thank you, Mr. President, that's my favorite question. So again, I speak from experience, but I think many women have the same experience as me. If you're a working mom, at the time I was a working mom, so this was in the early, late 90s, early 2000s, you only have 60 days maternity leave. So when you leave your baby at 60 days, like in my case, my babies were fully breastfed, my baby was fully breastfed. Pagdating ko sa office, nilagnata ko para ako magkakasakit, kasi hindi ako sanay na hindi dumede de regularly 'yung baby sa akin. So parang 'yung gatas hindi ko malabas. So ang laki nung adjustment period ko, that's why I was saying that my mother would even bring my baby to me. And then I had to buy and experiment with different pumps, may mahal, may mura, at totoo lang nga ang nagwork 'yung pinakamurang pump. I was blessed in that sense, ang nagwork 'yung murang klaseng pump sa akin. When I had my second baby, nag-upgrade na ako ng electric pump, and that was very effective, pero mahal 'yun. So if offices, and of course this would be the bigger offices, and that's what I also requested, I'm not sure kung meron tayo dito, pero alam ko ni-request ko 'yun, 'yung industrialized, commercial pump, so that it can be used by different women. Maganda sanang investment 'yun, kasi it makes it very efficient to pump the milk while they're at work. So I think that's the number one difficulty for working mothers. Whether you have a regular job, or katulad ng sabi ni Senator Bato, na 'yung nanay niya nagbebenta sa palengke, pakahirap nung buhay na 'yun, nagta-travel siya, namimili ng bibenta niya, magbebenta. I'm sure walang breastfeeding room dun sa palengke, but nowadays, dapat meron. The other thing, Mr. President, is really acceptance by society. Like I showed you the photos of my staff, never ko sila pinilit, sila 'yan. Their maternity leave is done, they're attending the hearings, they wear, they wear what you can call like a breastfeed. It's really the acceptance also of society, na choice ng mother 'yun, kung gusto niyang gawin 'yun, hindi siya dapat mapahiya, or mahiya, or maembaras. But like his honor said, we also have to create these facilities that those who want to just, you know, do this in private can also do this in private. So it's also the facilities. But really, it's public acceptance, and then the promotion, like his honor said, of breastfeeding versus having to purchase synthetically made milk.
Mr. President, on a personal note, I'm not ashamed to admit that I've always been close to our mother. And that bond has shaped the way I view the role of mothers in our society. For that reason, I hold deep respect and gratitude for all mothers, and I commend Senator Pia Kayetano for her steadfast advocacy in protecting their rights and welfare. Kaysa po niyo ako, Senator Kayetano, thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, and I've heard wonderful stories about your mother, which your sister shared with me. So I'm happy to know how much she's inspired, his honor. Thank you.
Thank you Senator Tulfo, Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. President, next to Senator Robin Hood Padilla, I move that he be recognized.
Maraming salamat po.
Senator Robin Hood Padilla is recognized for his interjections. You may proceed, sir, with the permission of the lady who has the floor.
Maraming salamat po, ginawang pangulo at sa ating pinunong mayorya. Hindi namang po ako magbibigay ng katanungan, kundi manifestation lang po. Sapagkat ako po ay matagal na naging endorser, ako po ay, naging trabaho ko po 'yan. Ngayon pong panahon neto, napakahalaga ng isang katulad po ni Senator Pia Kayetano, ang maging champion ng breastfeeding. Sapagkat natatalo po tayo ng mga advertisement, ng mga masasabi nating mga produkto, na nakakapagbigay minsan ng maling impormasyon, na ang akala nila basta formula okay na. Eh napakaganda po kanina ng presentasyon ng ating mahal na senadora, nung pinakita niya po na halos tama po ba 50% lang na mga Pilipina ang nakakapag...
Ang nakakakompleto nung six months exclusive breastfeeding, which is 'yun talagang recommended para 'yung kompletong nutritional value, emotional value na magbabigay ng breastfeeding, eh mabigay, 50% lang.
Opo, na sa akin po, medyo malungkot po 'yun. Sapagkat naniniwala din po ako sa sinabi ni Senator Bato de la Rosa, na napakahalaga po talaga. At nakita namang po natin sa pangangatawan ni Senator Bato, na talagang maganda ang epekto ng breastfeeding. Ganun din po sa aking anak, ano nakita ko po 'yan. Dahil ang aking pong may bahay, ang aking pong asawa, si Mariel, siya po ay nag-breastfeeding din. Sa kanya nga po, two years eh, hanggang two years siya nag...
Yan po ang recommended, two years pa, hangga't kaya ng nanay.
Opo, nakita ko po 'yun, no ma'am, na talagang noong panahon ng COVID, lahat po kami sa bahay nag-COVID, pera lang po 'yung anak namin na nag-breastfeeding. Insyaallah, may Allah protect her always. Kaya po hanggang ngayon, hindi ko makalimutan niyo, kasi last standing po siya sa bahay namin, 'yung anak ko na 'yun. Kaya ako po ay naniniwala, at ako po ay sumusuporta po sa inyo. Ito po ay hindi simpleng usapin lang ng nutrisyon. Breastfeeding po ay pundasyon ng kalusugan, ng sanggol, ng ina, at ng susunod na henerasyon. Ito rin ay karapatang dapat kinikilala, hindi lamang sa salita, kundi sa mga konkretong patakaran. Sapat na maternity leave, breastfeeding stations sa mga pampubliko at pribadong lugar, at edukasyong na kasandigan sa ahham at malasakit. 'Yun lamang po, maraming salamat po sa inyo, Senatora Pia Kayetano.
The manifestation and interjection of the Honorable Robin Hood Padilla are duly noted, Majority Floor Leader.
Next to interpolate is the distinguished lady from Antike, no other than Senator Lauren Legarda. I move that she be recognized, Mr. President.
Senator Lauren Legarda is recognized for his interjections with the permission of the lady from Taguig.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. It's not really an interpolation, but a manifestation of support for Senator Pia Kayetano, who has, since the time that I've met her here in the Senate, has been regularly advocating for breastfeeding, not only in privileged speeches, but in intervention sometimes, when news comes out about something about formula milk, or... It's been very, very regular and soulful, if I may say. And I would like to think that the issue of breastfeeding is not only a health and nutrition issue, it's also an emotional issue and a bonding moment, moments, with our children. And having had, having had two children whom I breastfed, but I was just whispering to Senator Pangilinan, there are some guilt tanks sometimes for working mothers. Because I recall, I had a cesarean operation, but after three weeks, I went back to work. And at that time, that was long ago, the pumps were, of course, manual pumps, and even banking milk or keeping milk was not a regular thing. So if I may, and this is quite personal, I tried my best, but with the technology now, perhaps it should be easier, it should be more regular for our mothers to breastfeed and to bank them. Which brings me to my message today, and I hope that the good chairman, I'm not sure if it's in your committee, are you, the Breast Milk Banking Act. I'm not certain where this was referred to, the Health Committee?
Probably Health.
Yes, the chairman is Senator Goll, you're a member, I'm certain. I hope that you will support this after studying it. It aims to modernize and institutionalize breast milk banking, ensuring timely access to safe donor milk for premature, high-risk, and emergency-affected infants. And the bill also mandates a national breast milk banking strategy, expanding regional human milk bank units with satellite banks nationwide, establishing donation areas in hospitals, and private medical and non-medical facilities, enforcing standardized safety protocols, and creating a real-time online milk tracking system for efficient distribution, especially during emergencies. So I hope that the good chair of the Health Committee, assuming my proposed measure has been referred to his committee, and our primary advocate of breastfeeding in the Senate and other members of our chamber would support this measure after study.
Actually, Mr. President, I'm very excited that her honor has a bill, because it's something I have been advocating also for a couple of decades. We have milk banking existing already, but just like many things, we're very happy to institutionalize it. So we have in Fabelia, we've included it, we actually have 600,000 to support the efforts of Fabelia, kasi sila 'yung takbuhan eh. For the information of many, when you have premature babies, and if for one reason or another the mother cannot breastfeed, or sometimes abandon babies, very sick babies, sick mothers, then you have this milk bank that has milk. And then we also supported the opening of a milk bank in Vicente Soto, very, ang tagal na po.
In Cebu?
Yeah, more than 10 years ago na. And then our own hospital in Taguig-Pateros, we also have a milk bank. But yes, we definitely want to institutionalize so that in situations like her honor mentioned, like disasters, then may pagkukunan nito. And it gives such a good feeling, I actually donated milk, not through a milk bank, but just through a friend. And till this day, the mom, when she's, my friend, when she sees me, she tells her child na, "Oh, Titapia is the one who gave you breast milk when I didn't have breast milk." So can you imagine the support system that we create through this milk bank? So yes, that is a very, I'd be happy to subcommittee if his honor would like us to proceed.
Yes, perhaps a first hearing, and I'm, thank you for that. I was aware that it was already in existence in Fabelia. I'm glad to know that in Cebu, Vicente Soto. But I'm told that not all regions have banks, breast, what do you call, milk banks. And banks sometimes share resources with the hospitals that cannot operate. In short, it's not, there's a lack of resources, it's not institutionalized yet.
And unless we come in and step in, it probably won't be a priority, so...
It will not, and let's make it a priority. As we mentioned in our message, which you concurred with, premature, o ilan 'yan. Second, during disasters, when the parents or the families are in camps, or what do you call the, refuge, not refugee camps.
In prison.
Or either in prison, or in disasters, and there's no privacy, and you're not able to give your milk. But if there are breast, if there are milk banks, then it would be readily available. And I think the low percentage of children who are fed by breast milk would rise if we institutionalize the breast bank. So I'm glad to excite you on this issue, on this issue, and I hope we can have, I'm certain, the cooperation of the Health Committee. So before the end of the year, we can institutionalize this and provide even an amendment, if the Chair of the Finance Committee would agree, at least to have regional milk banks for our children. So that is my intervention. I'm grateful to the good Senator from Taguig and Pateros for bringing this very important nutritional, emotional issue for women and children and for families during Breastfeeding Month, which is this month of August.
Thank you Senator Lauren, I just also, before I, I want to end on this note. I thank, I thank the good Senator for her interventions. I don't know if she missed it, because I thought she stood up to discuss this point. I had earlier stated that breastfeeding is shown to affect several of the SDGs, including SDG 13 on climate action. So I thought that that's what her honor will discuss. But nevertheless, because I know that's close to her heart, I just want to say that, you know, when I see this, sometimes I have to pause a minute, say, okay, what is the connection? Breastfeeding, climate change. Well, simple, industrialization. The more industrialization we have, the more use of chemicals, the more combustion in the air, which is exactly what happens when you have to produce milk that comes in a can, that comes in plastic.
Yes.
So, that's why you breastfeed.
Exactly, yes. And as I mentioned, in disasters and such a vulnerable nation, 20 typhoons a year or more, and those who are in temporary shelters in schools, we must provide the need of children who are breastfeeding with their mothers who live in disaster areas. So, thank you for that, and we look forward to working with the committee and with your honor for the passage of this measure soonest. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Legarda, for the information of the ladies of the floor. Chair confirms that indeed that bill was referred to the Committee on Health.
Thank you.
Shared by Senator Goll. Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. President. Last but not the least is the distinguished Deputy Minority Leader, no other than Senator Risa Ondiveros. I move that she be recognized, Mr. President.
Senator Risa Ondiveros is recognized for her interjection with the permission of the lady from Taguig.
Salamat tabi, Mr. President. Dear Senator from Taguig and Pateros, pakiramdam ko parang taunang ritwal natin ito.
Yes, exactly.
Especially for us women here in the Senate. And I really anticipate it, and it's so meaningful every year for all of us.
And so is your intervention, Your Honor.
Salamat po. And hopefully also for our kabaro who are witnessing these annual exchanges spurred by your privileged speeches. So, if you would allow, just a brief manifestation first, and then my brief interpolation. So, Mr. President, distinguished colleagues, I rise to associate myself with the privileged speech of our colleague Senator Pia Kaytano. Sa totoo lang po, even my staff is grateful to her, Mr. President, for the breastfeeding lounge here in the Senate. Like her staff, as she has just mentioned, my staff are pump ladies. Strike anywhere, ikang na. Pero pasalamat po sila sa maganda nating breastfeeding lounge dito. Thanks to the good Senator from Taguig and Pateros.
And our, our God Office.
And our God Office, yes. Senator Pia, mabuhay ang ating God Office. Because truly, breastfeeding is not only a personal health choice, but a national development imperative. And as you have always pointed out, it's also a global imperative through the Sustainable Development Goals. Breastfeeding indeed protects our children, strengthens our families, and reduces the burden of disease on our healthcare system. Kaya, pinasa namin ni Senator Pia ang maternity leave law sa ilalim ni nooy, Senate President, at ngayon, Minority Leader Tito Soto, because of the need to give longer, because also of the need to give longer breastfeeding time to our mothers and infants. But I wish to underscore one critical gap. While our laws on maternity leave and breastfeeding support are progressive, they benefit mainly those in formal employment.
Yes.
And the good Senator has also referred to this in her speech. Millions of Filipino mothers in the gig and informal economy, delivery riders, partners, market vendors, tulad ng nabanggit nyo na rin Senator Pia, online freelancers, even household workers, continue to be left behind. These are women who do not have employers, bound by law to provide maternity leave, lactation breaks, or even breastfeeding stations. Kung sino pa ang pinakanangangailangan ng suporta, sila pa ang hindi nakatatanggap. Maternity protection and breastfeeding should not be a privilege only for those with formal jobs. It should be the right of every mother and every child. If we are to uphold the intent of our laws and the Constitution's mandate to protect mothers and children, we must begin to craft measures that extend maternity benefits and breastfeeding support to these women. So, I thank Senator Pia Kaytano, Mr. President, for championing this cause. And I hope we can work together to continue to ensure no mother is left behind. So, now, dear Senator from Taguig and Pateros, just a few interpolation questions. Madam Sponsor, you have rightly emphasized the benefits of breastfeeding. Given your long advocacy, nakikita niyo rin po ba 'yung pangangailangan na, yun na nga, iextend young maternity benefit, maternity protection sa mga kabaro natin na nasa gig at saka informal economy na hindi pa nasasaku pa ng ating mga kasalukuyang batas?
Yes, so as her honor was pointing out, this other women who are not in the formal economy, napaisip nga ako nung mga klase ng trabaho, no? So, for example, ang nanay, work from home, may sarili siyang negosyo. In that sense, I would like to surmise, naskontrolado niya 'yung oras niya, therefore, may flexibility naman siya. Pero, 'yung nasa gig, by law, kasi, ang napagkakaalala ko, by law, we refer nga naman to an employer. So, kung nag gig-gig ka, di wala kayong employer-employee relationship, diba? So, baka doon tayo may gap na magandang amendment, diba? Kasi, so in other words, whenever there is a working mom performing her job, her principal or her client should recognize the fact that she is a breastfeeding mom and extend utmost support, the same way we have provided in the law. For the record, compromise na nga po 'yung breastfeeding time na nilagay natin in the law. In the law, it is only 40 minutes. You can take it twice 20/20. And for those who have tried to express milk, ang swerte mo na, kung in one breastfeeding session of 20 minutes, marami kang maexpress. Some can, but not me, I cannot, in 20 minutes. Pero, wala, these are compromises that we had to make with the business sector, with the industry. So, ang dami pa talagang room for improvement. But perhaps we can start with a simple amendment, that it's not just employer-employee, but any woman rendering service should have those needs of hers recognized. Thank you for that, dear Senator Risa.
Salamat po. Dear Lady from Taguig and Pateros, hindi lang sa suporta niyo sa pag-explore natin ng breastfeeding support sa mga women sa informal and gig economies. Pati 'yung suggestion ninyo, na, I take it as a suggestion, kasi it sparked an idea in my mind, kung pwede rin nating tignan na madagdagan, 'yung, hindi lang 'yung duration, the 20 minutes, pero 'yung dami ng mga ganong breastfeeding breaks, kung kakayanin. Kasi, lalo na kung batang-bata pa 'yung baby, maalala natin, posible ang every two or every three hours.
Yes, definitely. Kaya nga eh. Totoo. Um, definitely. I think, I think sa, depende din sa klase ng work nila. Kaya, I tried my very best to be understanding then dun sa industry nung kausap natin. I can imagine, katulad sa trabaho natin, kung nagre-research, or in my case, 'yung mga abugado ko, ang dami nilang flexibility. They can even use my own room to lactate, or if they even bring their baby, it's fine with me. But not all have those kind of working arrangements, diba? So, we have to be creative in how we try to provide this kind of environment for mothers. And let's take note, Mr. President, I think we're doing a good job compared to other countries where, ni hindi na nga nag-abalang bumalik sa workforce ang mga kababaihan. Kasi, talagang they get very little support in the workforce. So, let's try to keep doing, keep improving and do better for them.
I'm with you there, Senator Pia. Now, in your view, ano kaya 'yung pinaka feasible na mechanism, whether yun ay Philhealth, SSS, o kahit bagong Social Protection Fund, na pwedeng magprovide ng income support para sa mga nanay sa informal sector? Para magkaroon sila ng panahon na mag-breastfeed exclusively sa unang anim na buwan ang buhay ng baby nila?
Kasi nung pinasa natin, well, when we were working on the expanded maternity leave law, paray nga 'yung paliwanag natin sa industry, na maliit lang 'yung tama nito sa inyo, kasi dun 'yan kukunin sa SSS. Kung tama 'yung naaalala ko, employees receiving up to 40,000 a month, 'yung nandun sa pay grade na yun, pasok na pasok yun. So, karamihan naman ng rank and file, diba? Kahit mga supervisors, pasok pa naman sila dun. So, wala na ngang idadagdag pa dun ang employer. Walang pabigat sa kanila. Kaya, ang hirap intindihin na, but ayaw niyong pumayag, diba? Kesa sa naman 'yung babae 'yan eh, hindi na magtrabaho, nawalan pa 'yung buong pamilya niya. Eh, siyempre, mga anak 'yan eh. I mean, most, most, at least in our country, still want to have children. Sa ibang bansa, kasi maraming kababaihan ayaw na magkaroon ng anak. And that's something we have to be prepared for, ha? All over the world, in many industrialized countries, childbirth is being delayed, getting married is being delayed or not even happening anymore. So, now is the time for us to think of programs that will still make it a dream for many. Ako, dream ko na magkaroon ng anak, dream ko yun. Maybe not everybody shares that dream. Pero, yun 'yung gusto natin, that people can raise their families and still be able to provide for them. So, pagkukunan, honestly, Mr. President, ako talaga, mas gusto ko na 'yung mga support i-targeted. So, even if I look at the funding that we throw in, that we provide, DSWD, DOLI, I think ang first beneficiary is dapat dun, 'yung working mothers, diba? So, baka we can creatively come up with programs that provide additional support for these mothers. And I need to share a very short story. Years ago, years ago, I was a new senator. The usual, may bagyo, calamity, tumulong ako dun, inaabutan natin ang relief goods ang mga kababayan natin, diba? But because of my involvement in women, and in particular, 'yung concern ko sa buntis at bagong panganak ng mga nanay, sabi ko, gawan ang hiwalay na pila ang buntis at 'yung nagpapadede na nanay. Kasi, 'yung goody bag niya, 'yung relief bag niya, dagdagan niyo ng protein, at dagdagan niyo ng tubig. Diba? Kasi, feeding to siya eh. So, buntis ka, feeding to, breastfeeding ka, feeding to. Tapos, as any breastfeeding mother knows, nakakauhao sa tubig. And then, I would make small chat with each mother I came across. O, pang ilang pagbubuntis mo na yan, ilan na anak mo? Nalula ako sa sagot, kasi 'yung sagot was, pang lima, pang pito, pang siam. Sabi ko, aabot pa kaya sa nanay itong additional na isang dosaya ng itlog? Eh, siam 'yung anak niya. Bigyan niya lang ng tingis ayun, halos wala nang matira sa kanya. So, as her honor knows, this issue is compounded. Walang simpleng solution. Pero, I think, 'yung target natin, 'yung beneficiary natin, simple, 'yung nanay, diba? 'Yung nanay. So, we, let's start with the target, the mothers, pregnant, and then lactating mothers. And what funds are available out there? Let's pull it and try to support these mothers.
Salamat, Senator Pia. And I'm sure makakatulong din 'yung mga dagdag na pag-aaral. What are, what's the cost-benefit analysis here? Para mapakita talaga natin that if we get to support through identified sources of funds, we get to support women working in the informal economy more, na makapag-breastfeed, they will be able to raise healthier kids.
Exactly, true.
Diba? Who will learn better, eventually work better. So, overall, add to the social capital of our society. At makatipid sa health expenses dahil mas makaiiwas sila sa sakit.
Totoo yan, lahat nung sinabi niyo totoo.
Salamat po. Second to the last question, would you agree, Madam Sponsor, na kung ang poprotektahan lamang natin, 'yung mga women in the formal economy, we would risk widening inequality in child health outcomes? Dahil nga 'yung palang, 'yung purer mothers, they often belong to the informal sector. At sila talaga napipilitang bumalik agad sa trabaho pagkatapos mga anak. Kasi kung arawan lang 'yung sahod nila, 'yung talagang one days off from work, one days less ng konti pang dagdag na pera para sa mga anak nila.
I believe that the benefits should extend to both women in the formal economies and in the informal. Banggitin ko lang na dun sa speech ko mismo, tsaka dun sa mga sagot ko dun sa mga colleagues natin na nagtanong din, ine-emphasize ko din 'yung creating a breastfeeding environment. Kasi, maraming kababaihan sa informal sector, exactly like the case of Senator Batos, ma'am. Kaya naman niyang magdede dun sa kinalalagyan niya ng trabaho. Yun nga lang, asan nung si baby, di dadalapas sa kanya, diba? So, may mga difficulties, pero pwede kong sa pwede. So, in that sense, as long as ipagpatuloy natin 'yung pagpopromote ng breastfeeding culture, para anytime, anywhere, pwedeng magpadede, walang kahihiyan, hindi dapat mag-sorry dahil nagpapadede siya, hindi kailangan mag-excuse me, karapatan niya yun, pangangailangan ng anak niyan, then we make it easier for women in the informal sector, pareh, to continue breastfeeding. As to the financial support, then baka nga dun pwedeng pumasok ang gobyerno, diba?
And I'm glad, ha, na kapag usap tayo tungkol sa tanong na to, good lady from Taguig and Pateros, Mr. President. Dahil, another way of appreciating the topic is, even if in a modest way, 'yung breastfeeding, kung susuportahan natin, pareho sa mga babae sa formal economy at sa informal economy, even in a modest way, it can actually contribute to a more equitable society. Kasi mas mabibigyan ng level playing field, lalo na 'yung mga baby, nung lahat ng mga babae makakapag-breastfeed, kahit pa sa gig or sa informal economy nagtatrabaho. So, just my last question, good lady from Taguig and Pateros. Tulad ni, I think it was Senator Erwin earlier, napansin ko rin po 'yung pinakita niyong data from the 90s up to now, the 2020s, 'yung percentage lamang pala ng mga bata, dapat of breastfeeding age, na nakaka-achieve ng 100% breastfeeding, at least for the first six months of life. So, nasa, nagfluctuate between the 40% and the 30%.
30%.
Never talagang significantly nakakalampas dun sa halfway mark of 50%. Parang may ibang klasing glass ceiling doon. And I recall, dear Senator Pia, sabi niyo nga, "You have been delivering speeches to champion this advocacy for the last two decades." So, parang isang henerasyon na yun. So, now, my last question is, right? So, may mga baby noon na ngayon, nagtatapos na sila.
Butante na.
At butante na, nagtatapos na sa pag-aaral.
Baka nagcollege na, yes.
Baka nagka-college na, eventually. Sila rin, magtataguyan ng sarili mga pamilya. So, maybe it's a generational question. What do you think it would take, the one most important action, or at most, three most important actions, para we can break through that floor or that glass ceiling? And really bring our society into that space na higit kalahati man lang sa mga babies natin, ay nae-enjoy po nila 'yung full breastfeeding, at least for the first six months of life, Mr. President?
Well, I think the most accurate answer should be data-driven, diba? So, di ko alam kung meron tayong data na magsasabing bakit ka tumigil. I remember before, I don't have it in my speech, but I remember before, I did have information. Ano 'yung top reasons kung ba't tumitigil mag-breastfeed? And number one is really returning to work. I mean, it's a practical, diba? It's practically, whether informal ka, formal ka. Siyempre, the fact na bumalik ka sa work, hindi mo na physically kasama 'yung baby mo, it requires a change in your day-to-day practice. Like in my case, kahit saan ako pumunta, bit-bit ko 'yung pump na yan. At kahit saan ako pumunta, every two to three hours, expected ko na nasasakit na 'yung dib-dib ko, I have to excuse myself. Lahat na yata ng klasing lugar, nakapagpump ako with my children. So, the transition from staying, being a stay-at-home mom and being able to breastfeed 24/7 to going about your day-to-day chores, would already, I think, create percentage decline in breastfeeding moms. But siguro, banggitin natin 'yung, hindi ko masyado nabanggit ngayon, pero I remember in the last, the last previous year, kinocoment ko din 'yung mga colleagues natin na naging supportive breastfeeding fathers. Ang laking factor nun. Kasi, kung si father eh magsiselos pa dahil walang time sa kanya, or says, "Oh, 'yung ibang anak, hindi naaasikaso," or 'yung bahay, magulo, eh, di dagdag pa yun sa problema ng mga nanay, diba? Kasi, problema na nga nila yan, nagkabago pa silang baby, another responsibility. So, I think the support, kaya nga, in many speeches I've given in the past, the focus was on supporting the mother during this time. The whole family, from the husband to the ate, to the kuya, really supporting that breastfeeding journey. Kasi, madaling, madaling bumitaw eh. Kung, at hindi siguro nila, siyempre, kung ikaw 'yung nanay, hindi mo naman inaaral 'tong data na to, I don't know kung... And by the way, Your Honor, that's why it was very important to include in the law, na ito is ini-include 'yan sa med school. Kasi, not all doctors, and I've talked to, not 'yung personal pedya ng mga anak ko, but I've talked to a lot of doctors na wala naman 'yan masyado sa sermo nila sa mga nanay, from the OB, sana tuloy-tuloy yun, diba? From the barangay health worker, to the doctor na nagbibigay ng prenatal, hanggang sa checkup ni baby, lahat yun, talagang dinidiktik sa kanya, breastfeed, breastfeed, breastfeed. We can do better with all of those, I believe, Your Honor.
I agree, and thank you, gentle lady from Taguig and Pateros, for, I think the most important clue you've given us today, dun sa pag-side niyo ng pinakaimportating dahilan, bakit tumitigil? dun sa pagsite niyo ng pinakaimportating dahilan bakit tumitigil sa full breastfeeding, before the six months at least, for women going back to work, including sagig at informal economy. So ibig sabihin, once we leave the most conducive breastfeeding environment, which is the home, eh di sana katulong nung babae 'yung workplace.
Environment na yan, yes.
Para dun din maglikha ng breastfeeding environment such as we have been creating here at the Senate. So maraming salamat po kay Senator Pia Kayatano, Mr. President. Lastly, I have filed Senate Bill 566, Magna Carta for Women in the Informal Economy, precisely to help bridge this gap that we have been talking about. At sana po, magka isa din kami ni Senator Pia at lahat ng mga kabaro natin dito. Yan, si Senator Loren din na nag-interpreting kami na sa layuning ito. Marami salamat po, Senator Pia Kayatano.
Mabasahin ko po 'yung bill niyo na 'yan, at I will share my ideas on how to improve the lives of our women in the informal sector, especially with this issue on breastfeeding their babies. Thank you so much for the Deputy Minority Floor Leader's interventions.
Would you thanks to our Deputy Minority Floor Leader, Majority Floor Leader?
Yes, Mr. President, may I just put into the records of this August chamber our sincerest thanks and gratitude to our dear colleague Senator Pia Kayatano for yearly and regularly reminding us not just to support her advocacy, but also reminding us that we can make a difference and we could be of help in any way. And so again, we put our full support to her advocacy.
With that, Mr. President, I move that we refer the privileged speech of Senator Pia Kayatano and all the interpolations and manifestations they're on to the Committee on Health and Demography. I saw move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved, and congratulations to Senator Pia Kayatano.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this juncture, I move that we proceed with additional reference of business.
Any objection? Hearing none. Secretary is directed to comply.
Second, additional reference of business resolutions. Proposed Resolution 75, directing the proper Senate committee to conduct an inquiry into the search of leptospirosis cases in floodgrown areas and to recommend measures for the identification and mapping of barangays with high infection rates for the targeted and efficient distribution of mobile clinics, prophylaxis, and other preventive interventions in this area, Senator Tulfo R.
To the Committee on Health and Demography.
76, congratulating and commending the Philippine Women's National Ice Hockey Team for winning the gold medal at the 2025 International Hockey Federation Women's Asia Cup held on 6 June 2025 in Al Ain, United Arab Emirates, Senator Marcos.
To the Committee and Rules.
77, directing the Senate Committee on Women, Children, Family Relations, and Gender Equality to conduct an inquiry on the alleged cases of child abuse and rescued 156 children under the custody of Pastor Jeremy Ferguson of the New Life Baptist Church of Mexico-Pompanga and all other abuses committed in orphanages and other alternative care facilities with the NNV of strengthening child protection laws and reinforcing regulations and oversight of public and private childcare institutions, Senator Antivirus.
To the Committee on Women, Children, Family Relations, and Gender Equality.
78, directing the appropriate Senate committee to conduct an inquiry into the incident involving the falling of cement debris from a condominium building in Cason City that severely injured a 12-year-old student with the NNV of strengthening laws and safety regulations on building maintenance and public safety in common areas of condominiums and other structures, Senator Tulfo R.
To the Committee on Public Works and Urban Planning, Housing, and Resettlement.
79, directing the Committee on Foreign Relations to conduct an inquiry into the status of the country's One China Policy and the reasons and obligations that such policy may entail, Senator Marcos.
To the Committee on Foreign Relations.
80, congratulating and giving due recognition to young athlete Zach Guico for his outstanding performance in the U.S. Kids World Golf Championships, capturing first place in the boys' seven-years division, Senator Aquino.
To the Committee and Rules.
81, directing the appropriate Senate committee to conduct an inquiry into the alleged corrupt practices and anomalies involving certain officials of the NBI, particularly on issues concerning illegal searches and seizures, the disappearance and misuse of seized items and unlawful detention, Senator Marcos.
To the Committee on Accountability of Public Officers and Investigations, Majority Floor Leader.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. President, at this juncture, I move that we consider and adopt proposed Senate Resolution Number 32. This is the resolution congratulating Mark Magnifico Magsayo for his hard-won victory, claiming the World Boxing Council Continental Americas Super Featherweight Title. So move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. The Resolution, Resolution Number 32, is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this juncture, I move that we consider and adopt proposed Senate Resolution Number 33. This is the resolution commending and congratulating Yumir Marshall for his recent boxing victory. I saw move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Proposed Senate Resolution Number 33 is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that we consider and adopt proposed Senate Resolution Number 43, taking into considerations proposed Senate Resolution Numbers 46 and 61. This is the resolution congratulating and commending Alexandra Alex Maniego Ayala for her historic achievements and outstanding contributions to Philippine tennis. So move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Proposed Senate Resolution Number 43, taking into consideration proposed Senate Resolution Numbers 46 and 61, is hereby adopted.
Mr. President, I move that we consider and adopt proposed Senate Resolution Number 45. This is the resolution commending and congratulating Alas Filipinas, the national women's volleyball team for winning the silver medal in the 2025 Asian Volleyball Confederation, AVC Women's Nations Cup, marking the country's best finish in the Asian level tournament in 64 years. I saw move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Proposed Senate Resolution Number 45 is hereby adopted.
Mr. President, at this juncture, I move that we consider and adopt proposed Senate Resolution Number 47, taking into consideration proposed Senate Resolution Number 73. This is the resolution commending and congratulating Filipino pool player Carlo Biado for winning the 2025 World Pool Championship held from 21 to 26 of July 2025 in Jeddah, Kingdom of Saudi Arabia, and becoming the first Filipino to win the prestigious title twice. I saw move, Mr. President.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The Resolution is here, proposed Senate Resolution Number 47, taking into consideration proposed Senate Resolution Number 73, is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that we consider and adopt proposed Senate Resolution Number 48, taking into consideration proposed Senate Resolution Number 56. This is the resolution commending and congratulating strong group Philippines basketball team for winning the championship in the 44th William Jones Cup men's tournament held from 12 to 20 of July 2025 in New Taipei City, Taiwan. I saw move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Proposed Senate Resolution Number 48, taking into consideration proposed Senate Resolution Number 56, is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that we consider and adopt proposed Senate Resolution Number 57. This is the resolution commending and congratulating the Philippine Under-16 Boys National Football Team for their historic and triumphant victory in securing the championship title at the 29th Lion City Cup held in Singapore. So move, Mr. President.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Proposed Senate Resolution Number 57 is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I move that we consider and adopt proposed Senate Resolution Number 58. This is the resolution commending and congratulating the Philippine Men's Curling Team for winning the gold medal at the Asian Winter Games held in Harbin, China. I saw move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Proposed Senate Resolution Number 58 is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. At this juncture, I move that we consider and adopt proposed Senate Resolution Number 59. This is the resolution commending and congratulating Corionne Krim for winning the world championship title in the open division of the 2025 World Supremacy Battlegrounds in Dubai. So move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Proposed Senate Resolution Number 59 is hereby adopted.
Mr. President, I move that we consider and adopt proposed Senate Resolution Number 60. This is the resolution commending and congratulating the Makati Football Club Girls Under-13 Team for capturing the championship title in the 2025 Gotea World Youth Cup held in Gothenburg, Sweden. So move, Mr. President.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Proposed Senate Resolution Number 60 is hereby adopted.
Mr. President, just some administrative matters.
The Majority Leader may proceed.
With the permission of the body, upon the instruction of the chairperson of the Committee on Justice and Human Rights, I move to elect Senator Bongo Vice-Senator Mark Villar as member of the said committee. I saw move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. The aforementioned member is so elected to the Committee on Justice and Human Rights.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And at this juncture and pursuant to Rule 10, Section 18, and upon instruction of the chairperson of the Committee on Cultural Communities and Muslim Affairs, may I respectfully manifest the designation of Senator Loren Legarda as additional vice-chairperson of the said committee?
Any objection? Hearing none. Senator Legarda is so designated to the Committee on Cultural Communities and Muslim Affairs.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And, Mr. President, with the consent of the body and upon the instruction of Senator Alan Peter Kayatano and with the conformity of Senator Bam Aquino, I move to transfer the primary committee referral of Senate Bill Number 102, Makakapagtapos Ako Act of 2025, and Senate Bill Number 103, the Third Commission on Education Act, from the Committee on Basic Education to the Committee on Higher Technical and Vocational Education, and to make secondary committee referrals of the same measures to the Committees on Basic Education and Finance. I saw move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion of the Majority Leader is hereby approved.
Mr. President, with the permission of the body, I move that we dispense with the reading of the Journal of the 10th Session, Monday, August 18, 2025, and consider the same as approved. So move, Mr. President.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion of the Majority Leader approving the Journal for the 10th Session, Monday, August 18, is hereby approved.
Mr. President, I move that we adjourn the session until 3 o'clock in the afternoon of Wednesday, August 20, 2025.
Any objection? There being none. Session is adjourned until 3 o'clock in the afternoon of Wednesday, 20 August, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. President.